Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
And President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman pro tem for this evening's meeting?
I'd like to appoint trustee Cook to be the chairman pro tem for the meeting.
And I will second it.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, we are all called to order, so would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands here in this nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did anybody want to clarify the rules for the night before we get to citizens?
Certainly for public comment, relative to public comment pursuant to the village code, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak, and we caution, please don't repeat. The chairman will regulate repetition. We don't, you don't have to have multiple people saying the same thing. So three minutes, and please try to avoid repetition if possible. Thank you.
With that said, are there any citizens wishing to address the board? And if you could, before you leave, if you could put your name and address on that sheet there, and if you could also state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, sure. Yeah, myself, Shweta Hattali, resident of Vernon Hills. So honorable president of Vernon Hills, respected board members, and village staff. Namaste all, good evening. My name is Shweta Hattali, a volunteer for the HSS Lake County chapter for the last six years, and a proud resident of Vernon Hills for the last six-plus years. I am shocked and deeply saddened by hateful comments made on 21st June during the village board meeting. I am here today to speak about the activities of HSS Lake County chapter. HSS USA, which stands for Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha, is a voluntary, nonprofit, social, educational, and cultural organization registered under section 503(c)(3) in the federal law of the United States. Vasudeva Kutumbakam means "the whole world is my family," and seva means "selfless service." These two are the fundamental principles of Hinduism. Throughout the year, our volunteers conduct and participate in events to foster a sense of civic duty, responsibility, and volunteerism to practice these two principles. Every year in January, HSS performs Health for Humanity Yogathon project. Since its inception in 2007, 100,000-plus participants across 43 states have performed over 4 million sun salutations. Here in Lake County during 2021 and 2022, more than 4,000 schoolchildren from elementary to high schools have participated in Yogathon. We conducted these events in our local schools at District 73, 96, 102, 103, and 125. As part of Seva Diwali initiative during October and November 2021, we partnered with several Hindu organizations and collectively donated 590,000 pounds of food items across the nation. In the Chicago area alone, we were able to donate more than 18,000 pounds of food items, and in our own Lake County, we donated 2,053 pounds of food items to Vernon Township Food Pantry. Our local chapter received proclamations and recognitions for Sun Salutation Yogathon from Vernon Hills Village President, and in 2022 from State Senate and State Representative for Seva Diwali food donation and Yogathon. HSS has adopted a highway in our area. For the last 14 years, with the help of high schoolers and other volunteers, we clean the highway twice a year. We would like to invite all of you to participate in our regular weekly programs and special functions to experience our volunteer work. Thank you all for your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to make clear that the comments you're referring to, none of them were made by anybody from this board, and it wasn't even a resident of Vernon Hills. So, and I don't think that they reflect what this community stands for as a person from Chicago. So we can clarify that. Anyone else wishing to address the board? He was up first.
Mm-hmm.
And same procedure, if you, when you're done with your comments, if you could sign the, you know, the sign-in sheet that's right next to the microphones there, and you are?
Of course. My name is Steve Dibretto. My address is 103 Televista Court. So I wanted to speak to the item on the agenda of Portillo's requesting additional capacity for its drive-through.
Would we take that at a later time, at the Portillo's?
Well, I should defer your comment to when we have the Portillo's come up on the agenda. That way we can have your comment as part of the discussion for that, so.
Fair enough.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, that's, that's on the agenda later.
Or later.
What's that?
Would you like me to sign?
You can sign later, yeah.
Okay, I'll come back up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you when we get, that's on the agenda, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's on committee of the whole, so we'll, we'll get to you when, when that comes up.
Good evening, everyone. Namaste. My name is Sunil Pavar, and I present myself as volunteer of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha, HSS, or HSS Lake County. My family and I have been proud residents of Lake County, Lake County for the last three years, and HSS volunteers for the last six years. I stand in front of you, all with feelings of deep agony and umbrage in my heart. This feeling stemmed from the Hindu phobic speech that Ms. Vijaya Nader made on 21st June, right here accusing our organization of things that are contradictory to our values and actions. The speech portrays Hindus in negative light. A few individuals, including her, are traveling from city to city, spreading falsehoods and phobia against Hindus and Hindu organizations. At HSS, we are open to the entire community with no membership requirements. I am delighted to share that Illinois State Senator and State Representatives have given their valuable time and have attended our weekly activities. They have appreciated our efforts for helping the community, be it through food donation, highway cleanup, helping community achieve better physical and mental health by conducting free yoga sessions at schools, health fairs, and community gatherings. I am distraught that an organization that holds such a value system and does good work for the community is accused of being a threat to other individuals or organizations. HSS as an organization has always strived for inclusivity, community well-being. I'm sure you can clearly see where our hurt and anger stems from. Vernon Hills is a thriving village where diversity is its strength, and it comes from inclusivity among all residents that have been fostered over years. Such a Hindu phobic speech directly weakens the village's value in diversity by isolating one community and organization falsely as divisive. We feel that it makes us, the Hindu community, vulnerable to being misunderstood and puts up at a risk of being falsely perceived in the wrong light. While constructive criticism is welcome, there should be no room for derogatory and Hindu phobic remarks like calling someone fascist and Nazi on any platform, on any pretext. This should be totally unacceptable. Despite these allegations, HSS will strive to pursue its lofty goals of serving the community and look forward to a partnership in getting there. However, as responsible citizens, it becomes important to discredit ill-intentioned words that bring negativity to society. I request the village board members to send a clear message by distancing themselves from such false and ill-intended speech that does significant harm to the village. Such message from the village board will only emphasize that Vernon Hills stands for the shared values for communal harmony. I sincerely thank you all for your patience and appreciate the platform to voice my concern. Namaste.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good evening, honorable president, trustees, and respected village members. My name is Resika Gokhla, and I am currently a rising junior at Stevenson High School. My family and I have been proud residents of Buffalo Grove and Deerfield Village over the last six years. Today, I'm here to talk about my experience as an HSS volunteer, and I felt the need to do so after hearing a speaker make a disturbing comment about HSS in the village board meeting last month. My last six years have been very enriching, as I have been given many opportunities to lead and learn from activities through HSS. During the pandemic, I had the humble opportunity to participate in a vaccination drive where we administered 900 COVID-19 vaccines, and in distributing PPE kits to a few organizations. Recently, me and my friends got to plan for and participate in two other service events. A handful of teenagers in the area came together and cooked a meal for a senior living in Wesma, an experience we all enjoyed, as not only did we bond with each other while cooking, but also shared our care with residents that we don't bond with otherwise. Another event that is very special for me is the yearly teachers appreciation day, also known as Guru Vandana, an event HSS has been celebrating for the past 15 years across the nation. During this event, we as students invite our teachers and pay our respect to them by uniquely celebrating the student-teacher relationship. For me, this has instilled the importance and role of teachers in our life and appreciate their sacrifice and service to shape our future. The recently concluded Darshana exhibition was another valuable learning experience in which I had the opportunity to interact with some of the present members. The event included a showcase of Hindu culture and heritage, spanning a wide range of topics through which we could educate ourselves, educate others, and learn similar things from other cultures so that we appreciate each other and come closer as a society. These are only a few of many such service opportunities brought to me and my friends through HSS over the years. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with the respected audience. Namaste.
Respected trustees, other members, brothers and sisters, namaste. My name is Ram Prasad Kralati, a proud resident of Lake County for over six years, and I'm also an active volunteer of HSS Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha. The recent Hindu phobic comments in these very chambers have shocked and upset our community. We see no merit in those baseless comments, so I don't even want to rebut them. Instead, I'm focusing on the true essence of Hinduism and also the constructive work of HSS. Hinduism, which also goes by the name Sanatan Dharm, or eternal truth, is epitomized by this one saying, Ekam Sat Viprah Bhadavatanti. What it means is, the truth is one, and the wise men call it in different names and forms. We are proud to belong to a religion that has exposed both tolerance and universal values and acceptance of all regardless of their faith. We at HSS conduct weekly activities for 90 minutes in the Buffalo Grove Park District. The goal of these activities is to strive and educate young children and adults in achieving full physical, intellectual, emotional, social, and spiritual potential as individuals, so they can become responsible members of local and international communities embodying the very Hindu values. So, HSS does various activities that underpin the universal principles of Hinduism. Despite these thoughtful comments, I would like to assure you that we are going to continue to march forward with positive work, and we welcome you all to join us in this community work and make our communities better. In the month of August, less than a month from now, we will be meeting and celebrating Raksha Vandan, a Hindu festival, to spread the message of universal oneness, that the whole world is one family. And we celebrate this by showing our respect to the local community members, including first responders and civic officials, by, for protecting and working for us. In the month of October, we will be celebrating Hindu Heritage Month by going to schools and our communities by spreading awareness about Hinduism. And then comes one of the most impactful projects of HSS, which is Seva Diwali, where it will be celebrated late October and November this year. But taking the positive experience from last year of donating over 2,000 pounds, this year we are targeting to cross 5,000 pounds of food contribution to Vernon Township Food Pantry. This is all, you know, embodying the Hindu values that we work for. And I'm also here with sharing a letter from one of our partner organizations who collaborated with us for the last couple of years, and appreciating the, you know, the partnership that they had with us in Seva Diwali. Early on in January 2023, we will be launching our annual health campaign, which is called as Yoga for Health, Health for Humanity, for the physical and emotional well-being of the students and teachers at many schools in Vernon Hills and other neighboring cities in the Lake County. Clearly, with a wide range of community-focused activities, HSS is not a mere photo op group. Can anyone from the village council present here tell us what is wrong with this value system that HSS holds and their practices, and what part of these activities is misappropriated Hinduism, as called out by one of those who was here a couple of weeks back? I personally feel that the remarks made at the village council completely are baseless and misleading and just false allegations with zero groundwork. In conclusion, we call upon all our respective village members to take a stance against Hindu phobia and send a clear message to all those agenda-driven peddlers of hate and divisionness which are not welcome in our village. Thank you very much for this opportunity, as we continue to look for ways to further our partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Let me just add something to this, and anyone who's ever had my social studies class will verify this. I am a lifelong student of the Mahatma, going back to my anti-war days, that's when it started. And his philosophy of religious pluralism is a fundamental of this community and of this country. So, we don't plan on taking any action that would be against any religious organization. Our diversity, I can point to last month when we had the pride banners up. Our focus on diversity is, is very strong, and always will be. I mean, and our park district, too. Are we one of the few communities in the area with a, a full-fledged cricket pitch? And I'm proud of that fact, and always will be. So, we appreciate you coming and, and pointing out what was said, but I don't think it really reflects this community in any way, shape, or form. Thank you. Anything else in this? Yeah. Do you want trustee up now?
I'm gonna take my mask off momentarily. I am getting over COVID, but we're at least six feet apart, so I think we're okay for, for a few minutes at least. So, so I attended the Darshana event in April, and, and it was a wonderful event. For those of you who weren't there, it taught me a lot about Hindu culture and, and all the advancements brought to the world by the Hindu people over millennia, multiple millennia. And I was disappointed to hear, at the meeting last month, the woman speaking about the HSS organization, I'll try to say it, Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangha, how did I do, last month. But I want to qualify something. First of all, that woman said herself that she's Hindu, so I, I think it's a little bit unfair to say that, that her comments were racist. What she was referring to is the parent organization, what I believe and from what I've read, the parent organization of HSS being the RSS, or the Rashtrya Swayam Sevak Sangha in India, and her concerns about that organization. Now, I understand the HSS is an international sort of offshoot of that organization, and, and it does wonderful things, as many of you pointed out. And, and I look forward to participating in those things in the future, and I think it's a wonderful organization. The concern lies in, in the original parent organization, and whether or not there is still an affiliation with that and to what that affiliation is. Because from my reading, that, that organization, there, there are some concerns about that at the federal level even. And so I think we do need to be a little bit careful. But, but I think as, as long as you're doing good work, which you are doing excellent work here, there's, there's absolutely no concern. But I just wanted to, to make it clear that, that that woman, first of all, was Hindu herself, and, and she was referring mostly to the parent organization, from my understanding. And I listened to her, her speech a few times again today. And so, Keaton, I'm happy to, to speak with you about this further in the future. We can have dialogue about it and, and make sure that there isn't concern about the, the affiliation. And, and so I just want to make that, that clear. But I, I had a wonderful time. I even called my wife and said, you should come over, and she said, no, I'm shopping. But, and, I have to call you out on that, honey. But, and I met some wonderful people, a lot of very well-placed young men and women who spoke at the, at the meeting. Trustee, or Chief Crease can attest to that as well, we were there together. So I look forward to attending those type of events, of events, again, together. But I just want to make it clear that, you know, what, what the concern was from my perspective. That's all I have.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate being invited to the event. In fact, I unfortunately had the RSVP regrets on this last event, but my granddaughter was graduating from college, so that came first. It was like, but, but please include us, you know, in invitations to other events. Anyone else on the board? Want to, trustee Schenk?
So I applaud everyone, or anyone, who finds a call to action to come in front and speak. There's a reason that drives you to be here. In this case, we know what, why you're here. And I think it's important for all community members to know that if there's something that's on their mind, there's something that they are not, they know something is not right, and they want to speak. This is the open platform. Just, that's why the, the previous speaker three weeks ago was given that opportunity, too, because we have those rights. I think her name is Resika from Stevenson, the junior. You did a very nice job, and it's always great to see that young generation taking part and speaking, speaking up, and also great to hear what you're also, all of you are doing for the community. You know, we all want to live in a safe, respectful community, be good to ourselves, be good to our neighbors, to our families. And many people have a lot on their plate, but I, you know, I commend you all for what you do in the community, to help, to help the community. As trustee Cook said, we're very diverse here. I think at last check at the elementary schools, something like 56, 56 different languages are spoken in our community.
Yeah.
So, what does that tell you? And, you know, it's extremely diverse. So, again, I applaud you for being here tonight, speaking. Keep up the good work. Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, we had four or five different languages just on my volleyball team this year. Okay, anything else? Anyone wants to address on this issue? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the village president's report. We have a couple of appointments. Would, any particular, you want to do them in the order they are on the agenda?
Yeah, the order on the agenda is fine.
Okay. Our first is the appointment of Andrew C. Jennings as Director of Community Development, Building Commissioner effective August 15th, 2022.
So with each of these, we'll need a, a motion and a second, then a roll call vote to approve the appointment, and then I can do the oath of office for each.
Before we did that, did we want to see if, I mean, those of you who came for citizens, we don't, we don't require that you stay for the rest of the meeting, so.
Very exciting, or you're also welcome to, to leave quietly. Right now is your chance.
If you like Portillo's, they got something going on tonight, you can.
You're, you are welcome to stay.
Yeah, I hear they brought free sandwiches for everyone, right?
Okay, all right, so. Trustee Cook? All right, yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Trustee Cook, if I may, just for the record, state that both of these appointments were made by, are recommended by President Byrne. They've been submitted in writing, and the documents have been submitted to the board for a vote on, on the appointments.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the village president's appointment of Andrew C. Jennings as Director of Community Development and Building Commissioner?
Motion to approve Andrew C. Jennings as Director of Community Development, Building Commissioner.
Seconded. We have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
President Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. Now you have a.
Andrew, would you like to join me? Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me. I, Andrew C. Jennings.
I, Andrew C. Jennings.
Having been appointed to the position.
Having been appointed to the position.
Of Director of Community Development slash Building Commissioner.
Of Director of Community Development slash Building Commissioner.
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Director of Community Development and Building Commissioner.
Of the Office of Community Development Director and Building Commissioner.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right, it's official. Thank you, Andrew. So just as a recap, Andrew was one of 33 applicants that we had for this position. We did a nationwide search. We had applicants across 10 different states, and unanimous decision to have Andrew join our team, and we're looking forward to having him start later this August. So, congratulations, Andrew. Welcome aboard.
Did you care to say anything? I mean, you feel free.
Not really to prepare anything. I just really appreciate the, the opportunity. Kevin has a great team here. I'm really looking forward to, to working with everyone, and I understand I have big shoes to fill with Mike, so ready, ready to get started, and good looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, the appointment of Brett A. Moeburg to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Did you want to say?
Same thing. President Byrne has submitted this appointment in writing, and we, we would need a vote to get your, the board's approval.
Okay, is there a motion to approve President Byrne's appointment of Brett A. Moeburg to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion is second. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Your turn.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. I, Brett A. Moeburg.
I, Brett A. Moeburg.
Having been appointed to the Office of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Having been appointed to the Office of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the village of Vernon Hills.
In the county of Lake.
In the county of Lake.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Of the Office of Board and Fire Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Chief, did you want to say anything, or?
Yeah, I think it's probably a good point, a good chance to point out to the community. Of course, the, the village board is familiar with the role of Board and Fire Police Commissioners, but perhaps some watchiness aren't. And it's really important that the community knows that the way we go about seeking police applicants is done through this commission, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and it's an important element to make sure that we keep. And it's an important element to make sure that we keep any level of political influence or other influence out of the hiring of, of police officers. So it's, it's supported by state law. Now that we are a home rule community, we've been able to modify those rules a little bit from, from time to time to make them work a little better. But importantly, the community should know that these three residents are the, the critical factor of assessing that we are bringing on board the right applicants for, for, for the police department, so. And welcome, Brett. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
And did you want to say anything? I already have my first assignment, so I need to start studying.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, welcome to both of you.
All right, then next item is the village manager, a report on Vernon Hills Days?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a, a quick moment this evening just to recap our, our last weekend of, of fun activities in Vernon Hills. It was great to get back out and, and have our first summer celebration, Vernon Hills Days, since, since two thousand nineteen. Overall, we had a, a very, very positive weekend, a little bit of rain on, on Friday, but other than that, the weather could not have been better. I would like to just thank a couple of different groups this evening. Their, that event certainly doesn't happen on its own. First and foremost, wanted to acknowledge the hard work, year-round hard work of our Vernon Hills Days Committee. This is a group of volunteers that are doing this simply because they love doing it, and they love being part of this community festival. And so I want to thank them for all of their efforts this past year, and believe it or not, they're going to be meeting in a few weeks to start planning for two thousand twenty-three. Would also like to thank the Vernon Hills Park District for allowing us to use beautiful Century Park. This was my first Vernon Hills Days in many, many years, and I forgot just how beautiful that location is, and being able to have the carnival right on the lake there, and, and live music as you're overlooking the lake and water and, and beautiful trees. It, it could not have been better. So thank you to the park district. Would also like to thank Countryside Fire Protection District for their support for our Thursday night fireworks. We got them in this time, so it was great to see that show, very successful. I got a lot of positive feedback this year from our committee on the ease of the setup for the event. That's a kudos to our Public Works Department. The event was clean and organized throughout the four-day festival, and that's certainly a testament to their hard work and, and commitment to the event. And so I want to thank them and Director Brown for that. And then last, but certainly not least, I'd like to thank the Vernon Hills Police Department coming out of the, the tragic events from July fourth in Highland Park. We, we knew that we had an uphill climb in, in terms of making people feel safe and keeping the event safe, and I'm very proud of our, our team in making sure that not, not only was the event safe, but that people felt safe. And I, I can't tell you how many positive compliments I got throughout the weekend. We had some new security measures that we implemented, and with maybe one or two exceptions, everybody was very receptive to it, very appreciative of all the hard work. So thank you to Chief Kreese and his team for, for a great, for a great weekend. Lastly, we have an item later on the omnibus, omnibus agenda for a fifty-fifty raffle. This was something that came in late to the game in response to the Highland Park incident. In total, we raised two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is going to be going to the Highland Park Community Foundation's July fourth shooting response fund. So we're glad we were able to put that together and, and get that money where it's needed. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I got the same kind of comments that you were saying, people complimenting our police department and the security and, and how, how comfortable they felt. And some of them were people who said when they first were headed there were a little bit, you know, a little bit tense, and said once they got there, that all went away, so. So yeah, compliments to the, your department and, and the others who helped with that. Okay, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to follow, and you know, Kevin, don't sell yourself short. You know, you did a great job out there, too. So thank you. John, you guys are always out there. It was just so nice seeing after, what, three years, families and friends back out there enjoying it, and everyone that you said, but also chief, you, I told you several times, but put it on the record, the presence that you guys had out there was, felt so great to our community, and your officers were just so, you know, like their hospitality to begin with. They were just keeping everybody feeling good. So thanks again, chief.
Can I ask, chief, what was the final total for your pie-throwing charity event?
Yeah, we raised, we raised over a thousand dollars. Of the twenty-seven hundred was from eating, eating shaving cream pies for about a half hour.
You smelled good, though.
I think it was a thousand and seventy-five dollars.
And you were nice enough, enough to let me throw four pies of shaving cream in your face.
Absolutely.
Very happy to do so.
If I could, Mr. President, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I, I would just, I, I appreciate the comments. It would be inappropriate for me not to give a shout-out. Obviously, the entire team, this is a tough period of time every year for the police department, between lacrosse, Fourth of July activities. This year, a tremendous amount of service, supporting Highland Park during that week, and then right into summer celebration. So the officers really worked amazingly hard, have, have, they haven't complained one bit. They've just done their job. They've worked a tremendous amount of extra hours. And we knew it was important to get the security right and enhance it, and I'd like to, you know, really recognize Deputy Chief Jeff Seelak and Commander Andrew Gillespie that really worked together, put together an enhanced plan, briefed me on it several times, made it better every day, and, and then executed that. And again, teamwork all the way around, but those two leaders were instrumental in getting this right this year. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else have a comment on that? Okay, then next item is the Assistant Village Manager, Vernon Hills Military Honors Banner Program.
Good evening. I'm going to be co-presenting tonight with a resident that I'll introduce in a minute. You may recall, during the May seventeenth village board meeting, as we were recognizing Military Appreciation Month and announcing upcoming Memorial Day events, you yourself, trustee Cook, asked staff to discuss some of the numerous initiatives the village has been involved with in support and celebration and recognition of residents who have served in the armed forces. During that discussion, Dr. Oppenheim asked if staff had ever given consideration to any type of military banner recognition program. Dr. O cited a program that exists in Poughkeepsie, New York. Poughkeepsie, New York. As staff began, began to research this program, we learned other communities, including communities here, right here in Illinois, have banner programs that recognize the residents who have served or who are serving in the U.S. Armed Forces. This program is being presented in partnership with the American Legion, and that's why I asked Todd Rennahan, a Vernon Hills resident and commander of American Legion Vernon Hills Post twelve forty-seven, to co-present with me here tonight. So thanks for joining me, Todd. The program we are proposing is going to be named or titled the Village of Vernon Hills Military Honors Banner Program. The purpose of this program is intended to honor and recognize the men and women from the village of Vernon Hills who are serving or who have served in any branch of the U.S. Armed Forces. The Vernon Hills Military Honors Program allows qualified persons to be honored by having a boulevard banner placed on a municipal utility pole. A policy and application process has been created and is being presented to the board tonight for consideration. Persons desiring to have a banner created and displayed will be required to submit an application along with military verification, which could include a DD two fourteen for separated persons, or for active-duty personnel, a copy of orders and a military ID. A photo and signed release will also be required. Persons can submit the application and payment to the village of Vernon Hills, which will in turn forward documents to the American Legion for review. The American Legion will be responsible for the vetting process and will make a recommendation to the village. Once the applications have been received and approved, village staff will procure the banners. Staff evaluated several banners, and with Post Commander Todd Rennahan, worked with a vendor to create a banner unique and special for our community. Each banner will be uniform in size and conform to fit on existing village utility poles and brackets. Our proposal is for each banner to have content that includes the village of Vernon Hills on top, an image of the service member, the service member's name, the branch of service, the family name or sponsor information, legion and village logos. The cost for each banner is approximately two hundred and fifteen dollars, and will be the responsibility of the requestor and/or family. In the event a family is unable to afford the costs, staff has noted other programs have created sponsorship opportunities. If the board does not desire to see any commercialization of this program, a funding source could be added to the village budget, as we have done in the past for other blue line initiatives. The proposed period of display would be for one season, which is designated as May, which includes the federally designated Military Appreciation Month and includes Memorial Day through mid-November, which includes Veterans Day. Regarding areas of display, many communities utilize their downtown as a designated area of display. As there is not a traditional downtown setting for our village, we do maintain a list of utility poles and brackets, and one, one area under consideration was on Lakeview Parkway from Hawthorne Parkway all the way north to Century Park, which includes twelve brackets in close proximity. Earlier this month, I was advised by Director Dave Brown that that area will be going, undergoing construction the next year with a widening project. So until that area becomes available, there is another area with a concentration of brackets, which is on Route sixty from approximately where Rustoleum is, all the way to Aspen, in which there's at least twelve brackets in close proximity. So that is staff suggestion for the highly concentrated, highly visible area. Both these areas are central to the community, they're highly visible, and we think they would be a great location for display. For banners to be produced and displayed in May, staff is suggesting applications be submitted to the American Legion or village no later than the last day of January of each year. This would allow the Legion and staff sufficient time to review applications and for the village to procure the banners. At the conclusion of the display period, the banner will be retired and returned to the service member or the family at a meeting hosted and conducted by the American Legion. This slide shows what the application form looks like and includes required information and consent for an image to be used. This slide shows what the template looks like, shows the village of Vernon Hills being listed on top, the area where the image would go, service member's name. You'll also see some of the banners we've seen include deployment information or other information that could be shown on the submitter, the family name, and on the bottom, the legion and village logos. Here's an example of what the template looks like, and I'd like now to introduce Todd and have him present the actual banner. As we created the template, we thought that it would be special to recognize one of our own. For those that don't know, Todd's daughter, Sergeant Morgan Rennahan, is a graduate of Vernon Hills High School and is believed to be the first female who was enlisted in the U.S. Army or in the military and is going to make a career of the armed forces. So we thought it'd be very cool for the board to recognize her, and we've created a banner. How do you like to make a statement and maybe show the banner?
I was pretty blown away there, trustee Dr. Oppenheim, when you mentioned that. That means a lot, not just because I have a daughter that's, that's serving, but those of us that have served, it means an awful lot. And I say that with, I guess it's been four years ago now, certainly B.C., before COVID, but we had a Veterans Day event at, or acknowledgement at the high school. The high school was very, very gracious in letting us bring the colors out there, and the, and then saluted us while we're out in the field. But what really got to me, and that's why I mentioned this, it means a lot to us, was one of our legionnaires that was in Vietnam. Not surprising. But he says, when we were talking later, he says, you know, I was going to the concession stand in the restroom there, and the high school kids stopped and thanked me for my service, held the door open for me. And to hear him in his early seventies crack up, and that, that really got to me. So he might, might have served in a different, different time than I did, but let me tell you, it really meant a lot, so I appreciate that. And then when John showed me this picture, Morgan's in Hawaii, so she's five hours behind us, but got to show her what she looks like. Of course, I, I sent her one picture, and she said, no, no, Dad, we got another picture. So the real live version, it was double-sided, it looks like that. That's pretty neat here.
Yes, you're nice.
And our rough count is about five or six veterans, or I should say active-duty military. For some reason, the Marine Corps is heavily weighted in that, but that's the way it goes. So I'm excited to have them. We're going to reach out to those families, and the village has helped, helped with those village, those Marines going off to, to active duty as well with the escorts. And it's, it blew them away as well, that an eighteen-year-old young man or woman going off to serve your country, you never know what's going to happen, and to see that they had a police and fire escort, that was very, very appreciative, very much so. So we appreciate your, your support with this, John, the trustees and Dr. Oppenheim. Thank you so much.
So there's five or six active currently that you know of residing, well, on active duty, but will come from Vernon Hills?
Two are brothers. Mom said you're not getting my daughter. That's right.
So with the census information that came out, we know that there are five hundred and eleven veterans residing in Vernon Hills, add the ones that we know of in active duty. You know, we think this would be a very manageable program, how many people do it. Kevin has suggested, you know, for the concentration, maybe we limit it to like an X amount, X amount each year. The brackets and the poles that Dave's identified, we believe that we could easily handle about twelve to fifteen a year, and we think that would be a, you know, just a great visualization going down Route sixty or Lakeview when the roadway is done.
I have a question. To get this, to kick this, so is this going up now through November, your daughters, for next year, then?
For next year.
For next year? I mean, if you want to kick it off right, to build some momentum with it, why can't we invest in those five or six, get them up now, and then get the applications going for next year? Is that something we can do as a village, instead of having, waiting for the sponsorships? Because when people see it, they're not going to know about it if they don't see it, right?
Yeah.
We, we have, we do have an, we do have an events fund, so if the board was to authorize that, I think it'd be a great gesture on behalf of the board to recognize all of our active-duty service members and create the, create the banner, so we only have to do five more to get, to get there, so I think we can do it. One of the things, you know, I just wanted to share is, you know, this, this board has been so genuine and so true to our, our past service members, those who have served in our active duty. And we just mentioned the send-offs that we do, where we do the escorts with our fire and police personnel, and we march them off. You heard me a, a couple of months ago talk about the welcome-home ceremonies that we've done, where if you served in combat, you know, the village welcomes you home to your, and turns you over to your mother. Just one of the, you know, truest moments I've been part of. But it's all the stuff that the village has done in between, such as sending care packages overseas, or the police department and Public Works and village hosting the fishing derby for those seeking treatment and aid at the VA hospital. There's, there's other things that the village has done. And in recognition of that, the village was actually contacted by the band at Great Lakes Naval Training Center, and they wanted to do something at the Arbor Theater. You know, we were also thinking about maybe a, a late fall, one additional concert that we could throw in as, as we lead into Labor Day. So many opportunities, but it, it goes both ways. The village is very appreciative of the service members, but know, when you see veterans like Todd stand up and say thank you, or you see active-duty like Great Lakes saying we want to come and give a free concert with the Navy Band, that, that mutual respect goes both ways. So thank you for that, and I'm hoping to have more information on, on the Great Lakes Naval Training Center band playing, but if the board was to approve it, it'd be, it'd be a snap of the fingers for myself and Todd to get those active-duty banners up and display the rest of the year. Dave, if, Dave, can we do that? Get the staff out there and get them.
Can I ask, how much are each of these banners?
Each banner is, it's approximately two hundred and fifteen dollars. I rounded up just in the event there was inflation.
And you were limiting it to twelve per year?
So, so that was the suggestion, as I've only got two highly concentrated areas within the village. I've got the area on Lakeview Parkway, which has about twelve to thirteen brackets, maybe fourteen if I go across the island, and then on, on Route sixty, there's a concentration of twelve. The rest of them are like standalone brackets, like there's one right here at Evergreen. You'll see a few in the muni. There's like one behind the village hall, but there isn't a, a single designation like a downtown would have, where they're all in close proximity.
Right. And, and you think there are five hundred or so veterans that could potentially be, potentially qualify for this honor?
All right, we looked, we, before this presentation, we did look at our census data, and it shows five hundred and eleven veterans, so that probably includes our four to five major living, our senior living facilities, along with our independent living residents.
Because if they all wanted to participate and it was only twelve per year, I, I wouldn't be living myself by the time they all got.
So I think if, if there was, if Kevin and I discussed this, if there was a year where fifteen applied, I, I think that Dave could easily find a couple, we could find a couple poles. You know, Dave and I had a conversation on this earlier. If, you know, a resident said, I would really love to have it in front of my. If, you know, a resident said, "I would really love to have it in front of my, in my subdivision," I think that would be something that we could consider.
So I personally would like to propose to budget from funds that we can find from somewhere for 20 of these per year, and then not put it on the families and not have to make it an advertisement for businesses to support this. I think we can, we can find those dollars.
Yeah.
Easily.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so with the template, we'll remove the commercialization option, there won't be a sponsorship option. The cost for each banner each year will be borne by the Village of Vernon Hills, and this year Kevin and I will work on designating an account in the events budget. And again, it'd be simply just 20 times 250, or 215, and we'll put that in the budget for next year. But we could start this year on, Trustee Schenck's ask, if we could do five or six active-duty that you're aware of, and we could start that this year as well, if the board...
Would it do us any good if we had like a banner, well, depending, I guess, where you put like a banner that says if you, for the application process for the future, or we'll just contact the Village?
We could put that on the website.
Yeah, yeah, right.
People...
So do we have funds for this? Is this something that...
I mean, we're talking a few thousand dollars.
Four thousand dollars a year.
We could, for this year, we could probably find the money to pay for the banners to go up this year, and then next year, like John said, we could just program the money in.
Into the budget.
I certainly can absorb this in the Public Works banner budget. We typically purchase other type of banners, and we can substitute the purchase for buying these instead. The one thing I do want to add in terms of locations, typically we have two clusters. One is in the Lakeview-Hawthorne area, which as we know, we're hoping to receive federal funding in January, bid that out, so that area is going to be torn up, so that's really where we have 12 or 14 of them. The other ones are, as John shared, along the Route 60 by Deer Path by Rustoleum. The other ones that we have are usually at the entrance to a subdivision. If there is a change in plans, that we need to buy more brackets and expand the program to add more of them, we can get this done, it's just whatever the board wants.
Okay. So do we need a vote to appropriate the money for this?
This is not on the agenda for a vote tonight.
No.
It's listed that way, so I would not recommend you take a vote.
Yeah, you'd have whatever you need.
I think we've got good direction and we can report back at a later meeting and update you on our progress.
And it probably falls under the manager's spending authority.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So is there really going to need to come back? I guess she wanted us to.
The question is, do we, those five or six, get those up this year?
Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem.
Because I know it's May, we lost a few months, maybe we keep up a little longer or something.
Yeah, I mean, we're almost in August, so I can't imagine by, depending on the lead time for the banners, which I don't think was very long, by mid-August, September at the latest, and then that'll still allow the banners to be up for Veterans Day in November and help in advertising the program for applicants for next year.
Good job, John.
Thank you again. This board is very true and genuine to veterans, so, you know, I'll say thank you, Todd.
Thank you. When John told me the length of time that he wanted to do it, that I was glad I was sitting down. That's, I'm not real good with math, but I think that's about five months. That's most of the year. Right, so thank you, Dr. Oppenheim, for expanding it beyond belief, but in some of those active-duty and just recently veterans, believe it or not, from little old Vernon Hills High School, one about two weeks ago graduated from, went in the Army, went into linguistics, learned a few more languages, Farsi and Dari, I believe, and he went to Cornell University, just graduated last week, and then two are in the, at West Point in the Army. Well, thank you very much.
Before you leave, would you like to get some free publicity about the Legion golf outing?
Oh, yes, that's very good. Thank you, Trustee. August 27th, not just my wedding anniversary, but it's a good day to have a great golf outing for the American Legion golf outing. Fortunately, it's 28, not two or three, but we are having it across the street at the nine-hole golf course. It's our third, fourth one that we've done. It's $50 to play golf, it's in the morning, followed by a luncheon after that, have some good prizes and gifts and so forth, but we've got room for 14 foursomes, so check out American Legion post 1247, American Legion post 1247 on Facebook, and we'll see you on the 27th. Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take a picture of the banner since you brought her?
Oh, she'll see, if that's a good idea. Come on, for the embarrassment. Not that I would do that, but since you suggested it.
Be sure to post it on her Facebook page.
Go just a little bit closer to your body. Close your body. You're a good-looking man. Yeah, thank you. She says a Wahoo's an okay place to live for three years.
Wow.
Okay, anything else from staff? I don't have anything listed, okay. Then in that case, next would be the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through E?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second. Any comments or questions concerning anything on it? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markport?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Shane?
Aye.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, it would be, okay, we don't have any unfinished additional business, correct? So we go to new business communication, approval and passage of ordinance 2022-087, an ordinance authorizing the Village Manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement regarding development of the plan and agreement to consolidate participating Lake County Public Safety answering points. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I have a presentation for the board. The board, I've been in front of the board several times in recent years asking for approval of an intergovernmental agreement to do one thing or another in the study phase of consolidation of public safety answering points throughout Lake County. These are dispatch centers or 911 centers, the technical term is PSAP, but we really are at a great point here to present to the board consideration, and I'd ask for your support, in really partnering, and I'll explain why that's important to the residents of Vernon Hills. We, as the board knows, since 2010 have partnered with Countryside Fire Protection District to run a joint Police and Fire Communication Center, or PSAP, and the steps we've taken over the last four years have led to this point. And essentially, what I want to start by is just showing the board and the community the problem at hand. When people call 911, it's because they need help, and if that call is answered by the wrong dispatch center or PSAP, it needs to be transferred to the right center in order to send the right resources to help that person. So the more PSAPs you have in a region, the more likely you're going to have a transfer. This has been only exacerbated by the explosion of cellular services over the years. And I could give a lot of examples, but let me just give kind of two examples of what comes to mind of the outcome of these transfers. Chief Smith couldn't be here tonight, but if our fire chief was here, he would tell a story about a case where a resident in unincorporated Mundeline just outside their border called because their house was on fire. Well, that got sent to, picked up, because it was cellular, it got picked up by the Mundeline PSAP, who realized that to send the right resources, it needed to go to the county sheriff of PSAP, that then, after triaging it, realized it had to get transferred back to the Vernon Hills countryside to get the proper fire engine going, but on a mutual aid basis, the first fire engine we would have sent was the Mundeline Fire Department Fire Engine that was less than a half mile away from the burning house. But because that call takes a circuitous route to get to the right resource, these types of transfers happen throughout the county on a regular basis, multiple times a day. On a police basis, I can give you a personal example of a time when I'm driving home northbound 94 with my wife in the car, and we see an obvious impaired motorist. At about Route 176, northbound 94, I call 911, which is picked up by state police. As we approach at 120, they transfer me to Lake County Sheriff. As we get off westbound 120, they transfer me to Gurnee Police Department. As we head into Grayslake, they transfer me to the Glenview Combined Dispatch Center, which dispatches for Grayslake, and as we get through Grayslake without any police officer catching up with me to make a traffic stop, I'm transferred to SenCom, which handles the Round Lake Beach area, and on the west side of Round Lake Beach, about 14 miles later, finally a police officer was able to intervene and deal with a clearly impaired motorist. So those type of things is what the disorganized level of public safety dispatch throughout county really results in, and it's why we're here tonight, it's what has driven us to do these studies. The current environment is not the result of any detailed planning, it is in fact the result of no centralized plan throughout Lake County. But I'm here to report that that has changed. We, for the last four years, have been working together, a number of entities, I'll go into that in just a minute, and it's important to remember that our residents don't only use 911 from home. Having a good regional 911 system is important to all of us, all of our family members, whether we're calling from home or work, or the park, or the playground, or traveling to and from any of these locations. It is not simply a matter of what's best just for Vernon Hills residents. We really have to think about this as a partnership.
Well, that was going to be a question, doesn't that actually occur with cell phones? That happens even more than it does with a landline, doesn't it?
It does, and since landlines have become so unpopular and cell phones have exploded, this problem's only gotten worse. And I want to pause for just a moment because I want to make sure no one misunderstands. This is not about the quality of police and fire dispatching that we provide in the Village. I wear a radio every day, I sit in dispatch, I watch them work. Our public safety dispatchers are amongst the best I've ever seen work, and they really make a difference. And I'll give you one, when I say make a difference, in the last month, we had a phenomenal clearance of a residential burglary happened during the day, and within four hours, the case was cleared, the subject's under arrest, and the property that was taken, this was a wedding photographer that had her camera equipment and her laptop with all the photos taken from her house and was in the suspect's car, but because of alert citizens, really good police work on the ground by doing a canvas and finding a video doorbell image, it helped, and then one of our, one of our top-notch dispatchers, Adam Duller, got on, figured out, helped figure out the vehicle that was associated through our automatic license plate reader cameras, license plate reader cameras, and was able to find out that this individual had been stopped completely unrelated in Chicago for a traffic violation, was being detained, and we were able to get that case cleared and the property back, and that public safety dispatcher was a huge aspect of it. And I could tell many stories about the quality of work they do. I want to make sure it's really clear, what we're talking about here is not trying to improve the quality of work our dispatchers do, what we're trying to do is improve the public safety service that we can all provide together in the county. The efforts that we've really been involved in over the last four years is something called the Regional 911 Consortium. I've served on that organization as the Chair of the Operations Committee, but it has been a tremendous amount of teamwork through a bunch of organizations. It's really broken down to studies that have gotten us this far, and we've been able to implement a couple important, important steps, and I'm going to go through each of these steps here one by one in just a minute, but let me share with you the partners that we have, 20 other partners that have helped us get here throughout the county and continue to be very much engaged as we go forward. The study that we've conducted over the last four years, and really the report from December 2019, that really proved the proof of concept of consolidation distilled to the core element here. It's getting the right public safety resources to the right location in the shortest amount of time, and do so in a financially responsible manner. And again, as I said, our dispatchers, our telecommunications provide essential service when we are deployed, so it's not simply answering a phone and then sending an officer. They do a lot in the background to help us be effective in the field. So these are those lines of efforts that are really underway or in the planning stages, and I'll, if you start on this slide at the top and realize the three different colors are, you know, green has been completed, yellow's in progress, and red is planned but not yet started. So the virtual consolidation, we did this last year, I came to the board, explained how by putting all of our dispatch centers into the same computer-aided dispatch system and all the police departments in the same records management system, that is the, that's the grease, you know, for the gears to keep consolidation moving. That is currently underway, the, those contracts have been let, the services have been purchased, and the implementation is underway, and we expect by next spring, spring of '23, that that will be complete. The technology to allow all of the Lake County partners to work in the same technology, that's been a real challenge in the past, just getting everyone the same technology. The next piece we'll talk about a little bit is the facility required for the consolidation, and then the organizational consolidation is what we're really here to talk about, this third line of effort tonight. So let's talk facility for a second. What is being planned now is what's called the RAC, the Regional Operations Communications Facility. This is a tri-use building, being planned, already funded, the design of this is already funded, it's underway. I was on a Zoom for an hour and a half yesterday, listening to building materials and window treatments, and we've got a lot of engagement making sure that this facility gets built correctly. It will not only house this combined communication center, but it will also house the countywide ETSB Emergency Telephone System Board, as well as the Emergency Management Agency, the Emergency Operations Center. When we need a place to really run a large-scale operation out of, this facility will house all of that. I want to pause here for a second, just really give a shout-out to the leadership of the Lake County Board. Over the last few years, they've not only, they've not only provided key funding and personnel and support in helping us do the work we've done, but they have recently committed to paying for the construction of this building, about a $40 million project, because they see the wisdom and the benefit this is going to provide countywide. So they are funding the construction of this building, and I can't overstate how important that is to get that, you know, get over that hurdle of how do we build a facility large enough to have a combined communication center. enough to have a combined communication center. When I mention county leadership, I want to be real clear. The county board has demonstrated tremendous leadership, and they continue to do that. But I want to be clear, they are not leading this effort. This is a true partnership of different entities throughout the county who have come together. And the county board and the Lake County Sheriff are partners in that. But what we are building here is not going to be a county-run operation, is not going to be a sheriff-run operation. It is going to be a true joint governance, multi-agency communication center, serving all of the partners with equal representation from any jurisdiction. And this model is well-proven throughout Illinois. Illinois does this really, really well, has strong state laws and statutes that support these type of partnerships. And frankly, we're not going to be reinventing the wheel here. We're going to be catching up, frankly, with a lot of other counties that did this long ago. A little bit about this facility. This is going to be up on the Winchester campus in Libertyville. Again, the design is really coming together here. These are some graphics of it. We expect the letting of contracts this winter with groundbreaking in '23, and we expect to be able to cut the ribbon on this facility in early 2025. How it differs is, this is truly a state-of-the-art survivable building that, no matter what Mother Nature throws at us, these essential services can continue. So there will be layers of protection to keep the power on. The core areas of this building will be able to withstand, I think it's 250 mile-an-hour hurricane-type force winds, and keep operating. So this is a quality of facility that none of us in Lake County have been able to afford on our own and provides a tremendous amount of protection to make sure that when crisis hits, our telecommunications can keep doing the job. So let me talk about where we're at tonight and why I'm here, asking for your support in this intergovernmental agreement, is that we've decided that it's best to have a, what we refer to as a two-IGA concept. Even though there's 21 partners that have been heavily involved in this study to this point, there's eight of us that have something in common. And that's that the eight of us all own and operate a PSAP. The other members do not. They have a partnership or they have a contractual basis. For us, the operations, the PSAP that we run with Countryside, we have a contract service with Libertyville, the Village of Libertyville. We provide services to both Libertyville Police and Fire. So what we thought was important is the eight of us is to get a couple ground rules in order first and decide to do the first IGA just limited to the eight jurisdictions that run PSAPs and agree to do a couple things. And really importantly, what we're talking about doing is, you know, going out of business the way we operate now, because we believe that we're better together than we are apart. But this IGA that's in front of you today is quite limited. It really focuses on the core of getting these eight together to hire a project manager to keep the study going forward, to not compete with one another, to do our very best to keep all of our staff actively engaged and have the best success at transitioning the experienced experts that we have working in these eight different PSAPs to the new organization, because it will be a new organization. And that's something that the eight organizations, the eight communities that run these PSAPs felt was important, that we focus on. I will be back at a later meeting, talking about some of the strategies to help us keep those experienced telecommunications engaged and help them transition to the new organization. Tonight, the limit of the contribution is, and ask for each of these eight jurisdictions have agreed, if approved by their board, to pay $50,000. Essentially, it's seed money to allow us to hire the consultant, the project manager, some legal fees to do what's next. So the next part of it is actually building the organization, the paper organization, putting together the IGA that will lay out how this new intergovernmental agency is going to operate, what its budget's going to look like, how the different communities are going to contribute, what schema the funding ratio is going to be based on, what are the core services this new combined communication center will provide. And there's three years of work ahead of us. I mean, this is not a, I'm excited to be here tonight, but it is a tremendous amount of work in front of us. And what we really see is, the next step of this is to build this second IGA. And I think our timeframe is to come back in front of you probably a year from now with this second IGA. The second IGA will actually be, instead of just the eight partners, it'll be built and designed with as many of the Lake County jurisdictions that want to participate. So upwards of two dozen different jurisdictions, I would envision, will be part of the second IGA that will go into the details of, you know, the types of services, how it's going to be funded, who's going to be on the board, how voting is going to happen, and all of those considerations. So we will be actively working with those partners on that step of it. But we really thought it was important that the eight communities that have employees, that have dispatch centers, get a few things done first. So that's really what we're doing with this IGA. And with that, I'll open it up to questions, and I have a lot more information. I really struggled to condense this down to give you what I thought was the key facts.
Comments or questions from the board? Trustee Schenck?
So of the 21, the eight PSAPs cover those 21? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then the $50,000 or times eight will go to providing, like, that transfer of the eight PSAPs into one? Is that kind of the concept there?
Correct. It's the money that we need to hire a dedicated project manager. Our first IGA back in 2018, we paid $35,000, off the top of my head, I believe that's accurate, all of the partners did, in order to have enough money to have a project manager to get these kinds of studies done, to get the consultants we needed to get the technology pieces done. So we're at that phase again, where what we're really focused on is bringing in another project manager to say, how do we get these eight entities into one? There's going to be a lot more funding required of all the partners going forward. We see this as a transitional phase.
So we don't want to go to the remaining 21, all the 21s? Because they're all going to benefit from going down to one, correct? Is that has...
Yeah, there's been...
Or if there's cost overruns, is that something that we might consider doing?
There have been heavy conversations about why we chose to limit it to the eight jurisdictions, because there are interests and concerns that we have vis-à-vis employees, unions, all of the infrastructure we have, that not everyone has.
You get to keep it tighter to the vest and make, pretty much.
At this stage of the game, we think that was really important.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm afraid we wouldn't be here tonight if it was more than eight, getting us to this point. There's absolutely an essential need for active invoices, active influences from those jurisdictions. I can tell you, I've already talked with our partner jurisdiction, Libertyville, and really hope to see them actively involved in the second IGA and building that second IGA.
When they do the, once it's built, I mean, it's down the road, each of these 21 entities, I guess we're calling them, is it, is everyone paying equally or is it based on population? What is it based on?
Yeah, it's a critical factor for us to develop in that second IGA. There's no one best answer to that question. The answer on the socialization of the expense is the one that works for all of us. And so it's typically a combination of population, calls for service, number of sworn officers or sworn firefighters. There's oftentimes one calculation for fire service, one for police. So we're unique in that we only have a police department and Countryside Fire Protection District, its own taxing entity, will be responsible for the cost of the fire service. So unlike Village of Libertyville, that has police and fire service at the municipal level. So the IGA, the second IGA, will dive into all that detail and will explain how we go forward and fund this every year.
Any other questions or comments?
I would imagine there'd be certain cost savings that we would recognize in the future by consolidating.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Oppenheimer. I'm glad you mentioned that. Let me answer this question two ways. One is, if there were no cost savings, I would be here making the exact same recommendation. With that being said, there absolutely will be efficiencies, cost efficiencies, when you're not supporting eight separate facilities that run heavily on technology, equipment. We probably have in our center alone, if I had to guess, we probably had 30 PCs running at any given time and how many servers and all kinds of other equipment. So there are those efficiencies that will be born by the group collectively. The study kind of predicts what that looks like in total. How those savings are enjoyed by any different member is, it's hard to say until we get there.
Sure. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, so what you're looking for tonight is a motion to approve ordinance 2022-087, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I just want to add, thank you, Chief Kreese. I know you've been very much instrumental in this whole process, and I know it's taken a lot of effort on your part.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Schenck?
Aye.
Markwart?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, any other new business or communication to come before the board? The one thing I have is, I saw this evening on Channel 7 News, and they said this couple was from Vernon Hills, so I just want to pass on our congratulation to them. There was a couple on the Channel 7 News, Lawrence and Genevieve Gregory, who are celebrating their 75th wedding anniversary. That's remarkable. So, and they're apparently residents of Vernon Hills, so our congratulations to them on 75 years. It was an amazing story.
The secret was saying, "Yes, ma'am." Saying, "I agree."
Well, that's gotten me through 33, so. And my wife always says it was 13 or 14 happy, so it's more than half, almost half, so I'm in good shape.
I also put it as, I wear the pants in the family, she holds them up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting and go to committee of the whole?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, I'd like to call the July 19, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Forrester?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Schenck?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne has given prior notice that he would not be in attendance.
Is there a motion to appoint a chairman protam for this evening's committee meeting?
I'd like to appoint Trustee Cook to be the chairman protam for this meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Schenck?
Aye.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, first item of business tonight is the approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of July 5, 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
I'm staying.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Trustee Schenck?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Protam Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, second item of business, and we're finally getting to you to be able to talk. Sorry about that, Ollie. Second is consideration of a report and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of an amendment to the special use permit, allowing a landscape buffer variation along with site plan, landscape plan, and architectural revisions, allowing the change in the drive-through lane at property located at 221 East Town Line Road.
Thank you. And as the Portillo's representatives go to the lectern to give you their presentation, as a reminder, the village board considered this at their June 7 meeting. During deliberation, there were concerns raised regarding the safety of employees having to cross multiple lanes to give food to the customers in their cars. Also, there were concerns raised regarding exiting three lanes, three drive-through lanes onto one single aisle. Ultimately, the board voted to approve the petition, subject to review and approval of traffic components by the Director of Public Works, which is this tall guy to my right here. And then after his review, we were directed to then bring this back to the village board for final consideration. As part of their follow-up, Portillo's decided to reduce the scope of the project to just two full drive-through lanes. So it's no longer three, it is now two lanes. The petitioner did provide additional information, including a video that demonstrated their operations and its impact on traffic. Director Brown did review that information and recommends approval of the two-lane configuration. At the conclusion of the presentation, if the board feels that the request is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare an ordinance amending the special use permit approving a landscape buffer variation along with site plan revisions, landscape revisions, and architectural approval of the relocated garbage enclosure. So with that, I will pass it back to Portillo's representatives to present the revised plans of a two-lane configuration.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Preston Funkhouser, I'm vice president of construction and facilities at Portillo's Hot Dogs. And with us, you had a lot of really great questions last time, so we brought Paul Lumick, who's the general manager of the Vernon Hills Portillo's, been running that site for five years. These are a lot of your patrons here. And then Aaron Bruder from Cage Engineering, who you met last month as well. Do you want to show the video, Mike, or? I did bring it on a flash drive, if you want to show it, or?
I didn't realize you wanted to show the video. Oh, we do have your...
Okay, we'll go through the PowerPoint. Is this the controls here? So I guess I should start off by saying, we presented a month ago, you brought up a lot of really good questions. Trustee Forrester, you mentioned how you really liked the pickup locations where they were. We're preserving that. Trustee Oppenheim, you brought up concerns about whether or not we needed three drivelanes, whether or not that was necessary, based on the efficiencies of the kitchen, which Trustee Cook, you also mentioned, you know, how are you going to, actually, was Trustee Schenck who asked whether or not, Schenck?
Schenck.
Schenck, thank you. You know, whether or not we were going to remodel the kitchen to make it more operationally efficient, to be able to support the need for a third drive-through. Mr. Cook, you also asked about the safety of the employees of having a third lane. Took all of that feedback back to operations. And along with the suggestion that a second bypass lane, based on your very frequent interaction with our brand here in Vernon Hills, would probably be the best thing to do. If we were going to make an infrastructure change to improve the operations of the building... So we took that back to our senior operators and they said, you know what, that's a really good idea. So instead of trying to talk you out of the concerns that you had, we thought we'd just adopt your suggestions. We worked it out with Mr. Brown and I think we've come up with a good plan here. So, and we brought some operator excellence here and some very seasoned experience, actually seven years total with Portillo's, in case you have other, other questions after we show you what we're going to do. So instead of making three lanes, right now where the retaining wall tapers the drive-through down to a single lane, we're going to improve that and bring it all the way around to where the dumpster corral is now. We're going to move the dumpster corral south, just like we talked about last time. And then we'll move that island south or towards the bottom of the page here and preserve those four parking spaces that are there now. We'll, we'll, we'll carry out that drive lane that's there now and then just take away some parking spaces just above that. We're also going to soften the approach and the entrance. There's an island there that makes the approach, there were twelve cars lined up towards the target parking lot this evening when I, when I went there for dinner. And we're going to take two of those parking spaces away and that will allow us to make this softer taper so as you're coming along, along the route that runs along the edge there. Oh, the machine has taken over. Not sure how that happened. He saw me waving my hands. So that's the overall scheme and maneuver. So there's less landscaping being taken out, there's less retaining wall going back in. This is where we're moving that island. You can see there, down there towards the bottom third of the page in the middle. We're just moving that island down to make, to memorialize. You could really technically get two cars past the drive-through window now. We're going to widen it out and sometimes we use those as a bypass thing now. We're going to widen that by enough feet to make it two legitimate lanes all the way around. So it's not squeezing.
I had a question on this drawing.
Yes, sir.
Because there's that square there where, where the, is there still going to be the ability to bail out from that outside lane?
Right by where the dumpster corral is? Yes. Yes, right there at the bottom on the left side before that island, there's still going to be the bailout spot.
Okay, so that square that's there is not going to be?
That's the concrete apron in front of the dumpster corral.
Got it, okay, that's not a wall or anything?
No, sir.
Okay, good.
Oh, well, let me, let me back up. So as we were before, we're going to relocate the hydrant, there's a couple of trees that are coming out. You also brought up the concern about headlights as we round the curve and start heading down along the backside of the building. Headlights could shine into the eyes of oncoming traffic going up Lakeview. So we've, we've made the vegetation here much more dense. There's actually a schedule on the next slide that talks about all the different plantings that are going to go in there. This is designed by a landscape architect. So these are things that are going to survive and thrive in this climate. So we think we've addressed the concerns of the village with this landscaping plan. And then this is the schedule of the different plants. There's, there's, I went through it tonight with Paul, but I don't remember all of them. But maple is the top one, that's all I can remember at the moment. And then this is the dumpster corral enclosure. This is actually what we put in all of our new restaurants. So there's a corrugated metal gate painted and then there's a block, CMU block, and faced with masonry on the outside. So it's, it's a nice-looking dumpster corral. The, the brick will be just masonry brick, appropriate to the color scheme. I don't remember exactly what color scheme we're using here or what it's called, but the corrugated metal panels will be painted. It'll match the building. Do you remember, Aaron, specifically?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's the same as what we previously presented, but the enclosure itself hasn't changed, it's just moved ten feet.
I don't know if I could, I can't see it, sorry. It'll match the building. And subject to other questions, I believe that ends our presentation. Anything you'd like to add, Tom?
Well, before we have any board questions, I believe we had a resident who wanted to. Might that be appropriate now? Yeah, and then we'll come back to you guys, yeah.
Sure. Thanks for the chance to speak. My name is Steve DeBretto. My family and I live at one oh three Televista Court in Vernon Hills. This is Karina and Max. They are past and probably future social studies students of yours.
Yes.
So the reason I wanted to talk about this proposal is just a couple of weeks ago, we, I took the kids over there for a sandwich and it was a nice night like tonight. We live right on the other side of the tracks, so we decided to take a bike ride up there. And we had a nice ride through Deer Path Park, past the police station, and we got to the store. Went to lock up our bikes and we couldn't find a bike rack. We went all the way around and there wasn't one. So we had to lock up on a sign in the target parking lot. After we ate, I spoke with the manager and asked her to, you know, if they'd consider putting in a bike rack. And she said, it's a good idea. We've had other customers ask about it as well and I'll pass the word up along the chain. So when I saw the item on tonight's agenda, I thought it would be a great opportunity to talk about it. I realized this has already gone through planning and that may have been a better time to talk about it, but I wasn't aware of it at that time. So my hope is actually that the gentleman here can tell me that my comments were unnecessary tonight because it's already in the plan, but, you know, it's, it's, I didn't see it there. That's, that's why I came to talk about it. So it's a good way to keep a couple of extra cars off the road, keep a couple of cars, you're talking about traffic and safety. Let's give the people who want to get there in a mode other than a car a chance to do so and work off a couple of the calories from the beef sandwich, too.
Well, let's see what they have to say.
Yes, sir, would the end of the month, this month be okay?
Perfect.
All right.
I would love to send you a link on like some really good bike racks, too. Because some of them look great, but they're actually, you can't fit as many bikes as you would think.
Yes, sir, if, if I may give you my card, I'll commit to getting this in before the end of the month.
Okay.
Great comments and thanks for waiting this whole time.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for waiting it, as it worked out, it was worth it.
Oh, Dad.
Well, ask your dad to take you for ice cream. You've earned it.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? I mean, I think this pretty much fits what we were, you know, really discussing and, and we appreciate you taking all the comments into consideration and, and making the changes. I feel very comfortable, personally feel very comfortable with this plan.
I, I like the plan, so.
And as, you're right, as a person who goes there quite often.
Did the setback now, so the original setback was going to variance of fourteen feet off Lakeview? Is that now probably only like thirty feet?
Twenty-nine point five to the retaining wall.
Oh, there you go.
I'm sorry, to the back of curb.
So we recaptured some of that setback thing, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Forrester?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank you for the thoroughness. It's very refreshing to be, have everybody's comments be heard and adjusted and very easy to approve and very accommodating to our community members, too. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. It is a, is a pleasure and an honor really to be able to talk to this board. I get to do this in a lot of different places in the U.S. and this is, it's quite an honor to be able to sit here and listen to you all talk and interact with the community and.
Very inspiring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And since we have the local manager here, my wife's standing order is, is a beef with a side of hot peppers, side of gravy, and a large cheese fry.
What kind of capacity increases do you think you'll see by doing this? Like number of cars per hour?
Oh, I mean, it's a little early to tell. But honestly, I think it's definitely going to improve the overall efficiency of our drive-through, which is the main reason why we want to do it. Too many times we have too many guests that just, they get stuck into that drive-up. And if by having that second lane, then we can open things up a little bit more and again, it's going to improve that efficiency overall. So we'll, we'll see, but it definitely will.
In the island outside, let's see, just what direction is that there? South, where the, where you have them pull up their park spots are, like those four spots? Is, will they be walking back and forth through, your employees? So the landscaping there, are there a couple of pass-throughs there so they don't tear up all your land? I mean, I'm just trying to save your landscaping a little bit, you know?
There is actually.
Yeah, okay.
I think there's about two, if I'm not mistaken.
You're going to spend, you're going to spend all that money on landscaping and then you're going to get trampled on? Because you know they're not going to go around, they're just going to go back and forth.
Trustee Forrester?
Just, I don't recall the timing. What was the timing going to be on this again?
So Mr. Takeoka asked last time, you know, where are we going to do this? We are absolutely going to do this. I've put funding in Q2 of two thousand twenty-three to do this. So what'll happen next is we'll, we'll, we'll go to full construction drawings with Cage Engineering. I'll, I'll award that, I'll, as soon as, you know, assuming the board approves, as soon as we get some approval. Then we'll submit to the village for permitting. And then once the permits are approved, we'll go out to bid. And then I suspect that will take some time. You know, I've seen municipalities take as long as a year to do that, some are much faster. I don't know what the timeline is here. I suspect you're quite, quite faster. And I put money in the spring after the thaw, so after all the snows are gone. So sometime probably April, May, June is when I suspect we'd be putting it in. I've got to be conscious of Paul's business operations and do this during times of hours where we're not disrupting guest traffic. But I hope to get it done before, before June.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Trustee Oppenheim?
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for taking our comments to heart. I wish comments that I made in other parts of my life were so readily agreed to. And yeah, I, I think this will be a much safer plan than, than what was originally proposed. So I think every, everyone will see benefit in this. And I wanted to mention, I recently watched the end of, end of the series Ozark and it was so exciting to, to hear them mention the, the chocolate cake shake from Portillo's.
The second season in a row and it's in fact.
Yeah, second time in a row. But at the la, I think it was the very end of the last episode of the whole series, they, they talked about that. So yeah, just goes to show what, how important you are, not to, to just our community, but certainly the whole Chicago land area and now throughout much of the country, so.
Indeed, in fact, our beef bus is a food truck that we have. May, may I respond?
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry. We have a beef bus, it's just a food truck. It goes all over. Right now it's in Texas, we're, we just broke ground on Tuesday on our first Texas property. The beef buses was in Dallas, Texas this evening downtown at 5:00 PM. There were three hundred people in line to get a beef sandwich.
Wow.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty popular, as you mentioned. People really love the food and the, and the environment and the operations team. Just guys like Paul and girls like Paul, just fabulous. It's just very strong reaction from the community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being actually a part of this village, too. That's greatly appreciated.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so you don't need a motion, you just need consensus?
I, I would say yes.
Yeah, we're at the council, we want a motion directing staff.
Direct staff, okay.
Yeah, directing staff to prepare an ordinance amending the special use permit, approving a landscape buffer variation of twenty-nine point five feet along with approval of site plan revisions, landscape revisions, and approval of the architectural elevations for the relocated garbage enclosure, subject to the conditions attached to your packet and in accordance with the plans presented to you tonight.
And a bike rack.
And also, yeah, subject to installation of the bike rack.
Motion to, motion to approve.
Second.
To direct staff to do what Mike just said.
Exactly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forrester?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. And again, the fact that you were listening so well is greatly appreciated. Okay, next item is the Townline Commons Concept Presentation for New Multi-Tenant Signage and for landscaping revisions on the property located at five fifty-five Townline Road.
If I may, the board tabled this matter at its meeting on April nineteenth. So we would need a motion and a majority vote and the affirmative to remove this item from the table so you can continue the discussion.
Okay, is there a motion still made?
I move to remove this item from the table.
Motion a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Forrester?
Aye.
Schenk?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Chairman Pro Tem Cook?
Aye. Motion carries, it is now off the table and back into, under discussion.
Hi there, did you just swear me in or no? Okay, I'm Mitch Golds, GW Properties. I'm here on behalf of my company as well as Spectrum Development, who owns a majority of the Townline Commons. So we recently purchased the Toys R Us property, the vacant, the former Toys R Us property, I should say. And we're here as a joint effort, along with our sign vendor, to look at kind of giving an enhanced image to the center and bringing it to today's standards and allow us and them to fulfill some leasing efforts that are underway to, to fill the vacant spaces. So Mike, Mike Longfellow is here from Spectrum. He was here at a prior date looking to seek some sign variation to modify the existing sign at the entrance of the center. And at the time, it was noted that you wanted a more cohesive plan for the overall development. And since there's a mix of owners, now that's been consolidated with us taking ownership of the Toys R Us earlier this year, we've put together a master sign plan as well as some enhanced and revised landscape plans to allow for better leasing efforts for tenants in the marketplace and in turn, more updated image today. So. So overall shopping center, we all know, right across from the mall. Here is the proposed, the existing sign on the top left corner. If you're unable to see it, I guess we can turn the lights down. But the sign that proposed is just to give a more modern image. Our sign, our sign contractor, Olympic Signs, does a lot of work in Vernon Hills and has taken inspiration from other signs within the village. Part of the effort to get updated signage is to create some additional panels because there's some tenants in the center as well as proposed tenants that are seeking opportunities to be on that sign. So this is an effort to bring this up to current standards and more in line with the marketplace. This is an image of what it would look like at the entrance. Here is also, as part of the master sign plan, we're proposing a new sign to be constructed at the corner, just to the west at Fairway Drive. The visibility to the center, notably our Toys R Us, former Toys R Us, has been hindered considerably from the vegetation that's grown for the last, you know, twenty-five, thirty years. And the feedback that we're getting from tenants is that they can't be seen from the street. Given that retailers need to be seen and heard, we are coming here with, with an effort to clean up and remove some of the tree, the vegetation along the corner, provide some new plantings to allow better sightlines into the center so that it makes it easier to attract tenants to the building. So this image is a proposed sign. There would be a mirror image than what proposed at the main entrance that would allow more opportunities for the tenants to be visible along the street as well as better opportunities to get into, see sightlines into the various buildings in the back. Overall, we've done a master landscape plan. We will be maintaining the berm, proposing to maintain the berm along Fairview Drive as well as a majority of the vegetation along the street. There are certain areas that we, we feel are important to open up the sightlines to the centers. The bottom left is, that says building is the Toys, former Toys R Us and the balance of the center is to the east, to the right. So we are looking to clean up some sightlines, particularly at the corner, along the detention pond. Many of the trees that are planted, that have been planted thirty years ago are not species that would be even allowed in the village to be planted today. But we are proposing some new vegetation as well as, you know, pruning some of the other trees and allowing for better visibility to the buildings that we're trying to lease. Here, I'm sorry, this, here is the proposed landscape plan that allows, that shows some better sightlines through, through the center. Some, some of the details and that's, I think that's about it. So happy here to answer any questions, but you know, we're here as a joint effort. Brought someone from Spectrum here who's been before you guys, is it before, as well as, as the owner of Olympic Signs, if there's any questions on the design of the sign itself. Thank you.
Trustee Oppenheim?
I'm not exactly clear from this what has changed from the last presentation in terms of which trees are being removed and, and the sign itself.
So the details are, I mean, it's, on most landscape plans, it doubles in the details. We, we have clarified and worked with staff in the engineering department and forestry department to confirm the species of trees, the condition of the trees, what would be removed, what would be remaining. It's difficult on a large screen to note specifically, but the primary area of concern has been along the corner. We did note in the plans that the condition of these trees as to which ones we're, we're looking to remove.
Which corner are you referring to?
Primarily on the, the top left corner at the corner of Fairview. The northwest corner, yeah, that's where we're proposing. You know, that should be the most visible area of the site, being at the stoplight intersection into the site. And the sightlines have, really don't exist and they, they don't get much better along Fairview. So we've, you know, proposed to keep a lot of those trees and then remove the ones that we feel would, would be most impactful to. ones that we feel would be most impactful to bring some visibility to the center itself.
Dave, have your...
Dave can, maybe Dave or Mike can chime in on the details.
Absolutely. We did have a couple of meetings out in the field. I've actually walked this with our landscape technician. When I look at the Fairway Drive side of this, it reminds me of what we've been dealing with on Sullivan Drive. There's a lot of pine trees, the age of them, they're in decline. Many of them, and none of us can read the small print here, but many of them are poor in fair condition. So although I'd hate to lose trees, we had to do that on Sullivan Drive, too. We've been slowly removing some of the similar pine species. They have a lot of problems within the Chicagoland region, and I think that's really what he's proposing to do also. So they did a lot of work since we met last. The landscape plan has been revised. You'll see an X through the trees that they are removing.
Oh, sorry, if you can see.
They put an X through, designate in which trees are being removed, so you'll see an X through there. They've also looked, they sent their staff out and identified the condition of each of the trees. Many of them are poor and fair. When they're in that condition, then I think we do need to consider their removal and replacement and renovation. The... They have committed not to lower the berm height, and they also are removing the fragmites around the detention pond, which is something that the board was concerned about before. So in terms of actually the landscaping, my staff and I, we are supportive of the plan because they are renovating the site, too. The one fifth comment that Mike had put together is, existing parking lot is in poor condition, needs to be repaired, upgraded, or replaced. That might be one item I'd like you, Mitch, to address the board.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're, I'll just point out, I mean, this is one of the best pieces of real estate in Vernon Hills from a retail standpoint. Toys R Us chose this as one of their first locations. And if this whole center was occupied, we really would not be here for any reason. Tenants would be in there, operating. You know, this site has fallen, has seen better days than it's passed, and there's a lot of vacancy that needs to get filled. And, you know, we're retail experts, and the tenants that we talked to have historically said, you know, can't see it, need a better signage, you know? And this is the first step of part of a larger redevelopment that we all envisioned, and we're doing this jointly with Spectrum. You know, there's been various, there's various owners within the center itself. We control nearly all of it, which is why we're before you. But the long-term range plans include redoing the parking lot, perhaps adding some outlots in the parking lot, since there is more parking than we believe we need. But the first step is to kind of fill the vacant boxes, and then once we have that, it was able to bolster our ability to take kind of a phase two. And frankly, most tenants that we work with would look for those types of improvements as well, but without tenants in hand for these spaces, it's difficult to commit to those improvements. So these, we believe, are the first partials, the first steps to a larger scale to bring the site to, you know, what it should be, in one of the most vibrant retail corridors. So as noted by Dave, I mean, we're, we've tried to be sensitive to the amount of trees we remove and bring in some new plantings, but the site, the purpose of, you know, of this image, and it's a little hard to see in the light, is that, you know, this is what it would, the visibility would look like from Town Line Road to the main buildings in the back, which are, you know, 600, 700 feet away from the street. So they really don't have a lot of visibility on its own, on their own. But there's some big evergreen trees right at the corner that are blocking that, and, you know, our business is to fill vacant spaces with retailers, and that's what we're trying to do. So this will give it a more fresh, you know, current image, and be more in line with the centers that have been recently constructed and renovated. So we're just looking to follow in tow.
Any other comments or concerns? Trustee Schenk?
Mike, if I recall, you were not at this last meeting. I think you're under the weather. Are you all good with everything?
At this stage, staff is supportive of the variations that are being requested and landscape revisions, as Director Brown indicated. And this, again, this is a reminder, this is just concept presentation, an opportunity to get feedback from the board. We'll refine the plan even further, getting them ready for a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They'll do a very thorough review, and then it'll be back before you for final consideration. I would also add that, kind of, as far as the occupancy of that building, the staff would recommend that we place a condition that the parking lot be upgraded as a condition to occupy that building, and that's something that we can handle at the time of permit. And then if there's any revisions, and there may be, then of course, they would be back in front of you to get approval to revise that parking plan. So we would recommend that condition be added. Other than that, again, this is just technical review, I'm sorry, this is just concept review. So a general consensus is all that the staff is looking for.
Consensus to move forward and go into, you know...
Correct, to technical review.
Yeah, yeah. So we should pull a board?
And they ask, is it consistent with the other developments? They're asking for one additional sign, correct? This large...
Yeah. Thank you, it is. Hawthorne Hills Square has two signs, River Tree, the Mall, even Hawthorne Village Commons, which is a smaller center, each have two multi-tenant signs. So we think the request is reasonable.
It's appropriate, yeah, okay.
Okay, so trustee Schenk, you concur? Trustee Markwart?
Yeah, I'm good.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Yep.